A little rivalry going on here. Should like to wear your jacket.
Probably gonna be one of the better games this weekend.
We are live.
Is this the first one, first time?
No.
First one for me. You look good up there, Sam.
Do I?
Hey Jeff, you cold? You look good. I'm comfortable, that's why.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do we have any minutes or reports?
We do. We have the fees from the Collector for November 2014.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, it's the end of the week, so I don't... Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of other meetings next week, too, but...
How did the Taste of Jefferson City go?
It really was, there were more people there than what I thought would be there, and Jeff, he was my coach. He watched over me and took care of me.
I made him try to make a stand in line.
Yeah.
New guy's supposed to stand there. He was getting food and stuff all the time.
I did that, and then, and then, and then I just started talking to Kristy Campbell, because she's a lot cuter than you, and...
I've seen Porky Fines cuter than me, so...
But, no, it was, it was, it was, it was some good networking, so it, it was better attended than what I thought it would be with the...
So tell Kristy she's not getting a raise while you compliment her, so...
Is scheduling conflict, because I know they had the legislature at Ball on the same item.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what, um...
Why'd they do that?
No, no, but...
I think the Governor did it to us on purpose, trying to screw Jeff City again. Was that out loud?
Yeah, yeah, that was out loud.
We'll blame it on the Governor.
There you go.
Yeah, but there were, there were really a fair amount of...
Well, he wasn't having a big ball, so he didn't have anything to gain.
No, but we had a lot of new, newly elected people, and they rented tuxes, too, which I, I appreciate, but there were a lot of people there that were in tuxedos, and a lot of people came over before, and we had a lot of lobbyists, too, so...
They were there for a short amount of time, and then they left, so it was a crowd coming in and out. It actually worked out pretty good.
Good.
So we need to thank the Governor for that. It worked out real good.
There you go.
Do we have any unfinished business?
Just budget.
Okay, budget.
Budget decision.
Okay, Deb.
Okay, there was a few items that I just need confirmation on or decision on before we can approve the budget on Monday, before you guys can approve the budget on Monday.
If we approve the budget on Monday.
Okay.
Kristen says we're gonna approve them.
He could see smoke coming out of your ears.
No?
I know.
You just have to tell all these people they don't get paid. Okay.
No, they'll get paid.
Oh, okay. I did, from our last meeting, talk to the County Clerk about the memorandum of understanding as far as that we won't do it again next year, and that we're all okay with that. We absorb that. Also talked to the Recorder, and again, he agrees to that. We're not gonna do that next year. I couldn't quite get a chance to talk to Mark, but I did send him the memorandum of understanding, and I understand he would still rather have it the other way. He'd rather have us pay for the new position and him pay for the supplements. I don't know if he's contacted you guys.
I talked to him at the Taste of Jeff City a little bit about it, and yeah, he's, he's not real happy about it, so maybe we do need to, to sit down with him and see if we can...
Well, I did tell him that if it wasn't signed and it wasn't back here by nine o'clock on Monday, that the position will be out of the budget, and the supplements will be back in for him to pay for, so...
Okay.
So... Other than that, that, so the memorandum...
So, wait, wait a minute. If he doesn't fund those other two positions, or that position and a half, then he just don't, doesn't get them.
Right.
Right? And so... I'm not so sure that I don't wanna just do away with all the other MOUs and absorb that cost, and if he doesn't wanna fund those other, that position and a half, then so be it.
And that, that could work. I mean, it's in there that way, exactly.
Right.
But I do have those positions in there, so at this point, if we don't see it by nine o'clock on Monday, I can just take that one and a half out.
Right. So it's in the budget right now, that position and a half?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if he wanted to fund it at a later date, then he could...
We would do a court order to increase the budget, and yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
So... So you just let me know on that. And as far as the Public Administrator, I know she wrote you guys an email, and it's about the 3,000 in part-time. I just need to know if you wanna do that or not do that going for 2015.
Okay. Did, did you look at that? I mean, where was she at annualized with that?
Well, that's why we didn't increase it, because she was only about at 9,000 this year for part-time. So we thought, well, she's way above that, because we already have that in that we, let's see, what do we have in there?
She eliminated a lot out of the full-time salary line.
She did.
From the two positions she had.
Yeah. She, we left it at 13, and she only spent nine this year, but she did spend about 13 last year, the year before.
Okay.
And she explained to me in 2014 that she had a lot of people that had sickness and that couldn't work, and they were getting way behind, and our full-time staff kinda picked up some of this slack in 14, but she couldn't do that again in 15. So that's why she was asking for that to go back up to 16,000.
I'll tell you, Marilyn does a really good job with, with a small staff, because she's got about 250 people that she's taking care of, and I mean, she really, literally is taking care of them. It's, it's, she's their, their banker, their legal representative. She, um...
Everything for them.
Yeah, she, she's, she's kinda their mother, so I'd like to do...
Put that back in there.
Yeah, I'd like to do whatever we can.
So she's saving on full-time, and she just needs more in part-time?
She has in the past, yes. I mean...
She did last year, or...
It was the middle of last year, yeah, because...
So how, how much did she save from last year?
Um, well, we went from 30 annualized to 33. I don't think it, I think it was 2013, to be quite honest, when that position change happened. She budgeted, let's say in 2013, she was at 145,000 salary, and in 15, two years later, she's only at 142, with the raises and everything else that's been given. So she's saved probably about 4,000 to 5,000. And, and that was, again, because she lost a longtime person who had been here for a while, and she brought the ones in under that pay, so that's what that loss was.
I thought she saved going back.
What'd her email say?
She saved about 11.
What are that, I think?
Yeah. Well, no, 11, 11 is what she saved. She's asked for three more in part-time. She went from 62 down to 51 between the two positions.
What year did she say that? Oh, between the two positions?
That was two years ago.
Yeah. I've got 2013 here. I can go back.
So...
If she can get it done with another part-timer, then we're not paying benefits.
No, that's, yeah.
So what I'm seeing here is the Budget Officer request was 146, 685 for salaries.
That includes raises.
Yes.
Okay.
So those numbers are kind of...
And so I don't see any savings there in full-time.
Not from what the Budget Officer, not this year. It was a couple of years ago with the position. And the bad thing is the total that we're looking at for the salaries.
So that has the raises in there, too?
Yeah.
How many people over there? Four, five?
No, I don't think, no, she's, she's a...
She's got two full-timers.
Sorry.
And then two part-timers that were helping.
So she wants 16 in her, in her part-time budget?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with putting it in her.
Mm-hmm.
If she doesn't use it, she won't, she won't just waste it.
No.
And she's got a couple of them that can work so many hours because they are retired, so... Sorry, my computer. I hit the wrong...
Are we done?
No.
Oh.
All right, so 16 in the part-time.
Yeah.
All right, now I wanna ask you about maintenance part-time. Maintenance part-time this year was the first time we've ever used it. It only amounted to the last month in December.
How do I get to all this on the computer?
Um, under budgets, under the Commission budget.
Yeah. And then, where's it at? Commission's budget, under 15?
Yep.
And then what?
And then you go down to the Budget Work in Progress.
Okay, for or from? For Commission or from Commission?
For Commission. And then you go into the one that has the general fund for this particular question.
Okay.
The Excel spreadsheet, and then the tabs at the bottom. You don't go to 131, which is building maintenance.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So what I have in there now is 11,500 for part-time. Again, this department works for you guys, and what we envision as part-time for, because of Parks not being part of this yet, because we're gonna wait and bid that out and see what Parks come back at, this was just to help if he has vacation. People need vacation. Guys are off because of other issues, and to make sure that his buildings get done. And I have 11,500 in there. We can reduce it, but again, he works for you guys, so I don't think he'll use it if he doesn't need it.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Jeff, are you okay? Do you see that?
I don't even remember talking about the part-timer for it. I thought we was talking about Parks.
Well, in the OR chart, in the OR chart that I had, it was part-time on both sides, part-time in Parks, if he took over Parks.
I got two of them in Park.
Right.
Two part-time.
Yes, and one on the other side of the scale. I don't know if you realize, in December, we had the one gentleman come back to help out the Health Department to clean that four hours a day, and he's still out there, because we had a couple of them off for medical, so...
And then if we move Parks over, then we probably make him full-time?
Potentially, we have to, yes. We have to make somebody.
Right now, we're leaving Park out there, up at work.
Yes, I haven't changed that at all.
All right, we'll keep that part-time in there.
Okay.
But we're not adding the other two?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna do the part, uh, part-time and building maintenance, just for custodial. All right. IS, I know IS was in here the other day, which is 128 on that spreadsheet. He talked about the website, updating the website. I would like to add 15,000 to 20,000 to his professional services within his budget, just for the sole purpose of the website, and then we, you know, we'll know after we bid it out how much it's gonna cost, but he did quote a price of 15,000 to 20,000, so I just wanted to put that in there. If you guys want to, that's up to you.
Are we gonna do it this year?
Yes.
I think we ought to.
I think we're gonna look into it very seriously this year.
I think you're gonna be putting more than 15,000 to 20, isn't it?
I'd rather not put it in, and I'd rather just pay it out of capital.
Pay it out of capital?
Yeah, because I think professional services is, is more of an ongoing thing. This is more of a one-time shot, and so when you throw that in there, it kinda skews what, what they're requesting every year, but, I mean...
Okay, I could put it into capital. I think as long as it's a five-year investment, which most people would say, hopefully this is a five-year investment. You can do it out of capital.
For, uh, websites a five-year investment?
Well, if not, it may not be considered capital, as far as I guess.
So in order to come out of capital, it needs to be a five-year investment?
That's what the Secretary of State said at one point, that, you know, if you wanna capitalize something, if you want, you know, it's gotta be something that you, and considering how long we've had the current one, I would think five years is not out of line.
Right.
And again, until we get into it further, until we figure out what the departments want, what they are looking for, we're looking for a self-sufficient website that our departments can update, can handle, so we don't have to have maintenance with somebody else.
I don't see it as capital.
You don't see it as capital?
I don't see it as capital.
I mean, and we can also take it out of 127, out of our professional service, too, that I was thinking it's kind of an IS since he was gonna drive it, so it's not, and again, he works for you.
Then Collector's office said they pay for it.
I never hear that.
How much are y'all putting in for that?
15,000 to 20,000.
I don't know if that's gonna touch it. I agree.
And that's what I got from Dale, so...
Uh, Dale just picked a number and gave us a ballpark figure, but I think what we're wanting to do is probably gonna be more, because there's a lot to it. It's not just one side.
He's our ex, he's her expert, so that's the figure he's giving us, so...
The Sheriff just upgraded his website, so I really don't see theirs changing. I see theirs connecting to ours, unless I'm wrong, unless you're...
I don't know if I do it at all.
We've got a meeting with Jennifer.
Yes.
And we, and I'm willing to do it either way. It should hopefully be part of it, or we'll get links from it.
Yeah.
And we've looked at, we, because we would like to upgrade what we're currently doing. We're doing a pretty good job right now.
Okay, because...
We'd like to upgrade as well.
I was thinking you guys just did, or something.
I talked to Dale a little bit yesterday about this, and I guess he's just envisioning a, uh, something better for the county, but still having links, departments having their own links. So I guess it depends on where you wanna go.
And I guess we'll know more after that meeting they have and see where all the departments are at. So if you guys wanna attend that, too, that'd be good. I have to look.
When I've seen some of the really nice ones, where, where the county is the host of it, and everybody has a breakout area, if it's well done, it's more cohesive, and it puts a better community face on the county.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be, it's gotta be well done.
Yeah.
And again, this is just a placeholder for now. If you guys don't want that in there, we can address it at the time it happens, take it out of contingency, but I thought since it was brought up the other day, I would go ahead and put a placeholder in there. I got 20,000.
If you're talking about capitalizing, it could easily be a five-year...
Investment.
Investment to build it away.
I think it's on, it's ongoing, though, too. I mean, it's, you know, it's never, I mean, you're always adding to it, you're always updating it, and especially Dale was talking about that, that it was, they'd be able to modify it, and...
Yeah, that's what we're hoping to have, some kind of one that we can modify ourselves.
And you're gonna have to be able to update it, because there's gonna be new elected officials coming in and different people, so...
We should be able to do that part once it's set up.
Well, that's what we're gonna bid it to, the fact that we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't care if Jeff wants to put it in professional services, as long as we make note of that, that's why the line increased.
There's also information on it. On our website, the one part of it that is the absolute most critical that would have to be part of this is our sex offender. We're mandated by state law to have that sex offender on the website.
Okay.
Who did yours?
You reimbursed for that?
Rob.
It was done before Hancock. It was pre-Coco. The answer to it is, right now, we do it.
I mean, it's all linked to our site now. What do y'all want to do with ours? What do you want to change?
Change it, just update it, make it more user-friendly, make it, the site work...
I can get around on it, so it's pretty user-friendly, because I'm technologically challenged. I've gotten to where I can watch a Commission meeting, I can go look at the agenda for about a minute. I can go to the Clerk's site, it's all on the left-hand side. Mary, y'all wanting to make it prettier, or what?
Well, there's, there's, the two things that seem to me that'd be really good to make their user-friendly on it are the public access part of GIS, and we've got, we've got a program that we're rolled out soon for Jeff's benefit, and it's, it's our crime mapping program, and, and most of it is internal to law enforcement operation, but a portion of it will be accessible via our website, or actually even, even on a, even on an iPhone app or Android app. And what it would do is allow, allow someone who's going, if they're going into a neighborhood, is there crime in this neighborhood? What's the density and type, things like that. And it's gonna, and that's just another service that we're offering. It would be nice if all of our services were very, were grouped well, as a county face.
You can go right to minimum GIS, and then take it to the minimum GIS, interactive maps, mapping service. There it is.
I think that's a more of a question for Dale, too, because he was one of you.
Well, that's just some of the conversation that I'm, that I'm gonna be bringing to the table next week.
And maybe, you know, and go and see the concerns of the other departments. It sounds like that's what's gonna happen.
I just, okay, that's fine. Get a bid on, I don't know what we're getting, or what your goal is, your mission, your... I can get to anything from our website, is what I'm saying. What are y'all wanting to, clean it up, make it pretty, put some bells and whistles on it, or...
Make it more mobile-friendly?
Make it for us to be able to...
We'd like to put money in the budget for, to do that with you first, and then...
You could take it from there.
I don't care if it's in the budget, I'm just saying, I don't know what...
I don't think you got it.
...we're wanting to do.
That was personal. It wasn't about computers, though.
I know, I know.
It was more Commissioner-friendly.
I'm sure Ralph has a lot of stuff he wants to put on site for his office. It would be nice if each office actually had the same type of format.
Yes.
That people, so when people went from one office to the next, they would, could easily find what the...
Are you gonna be able to get all of y'all to agree on what kind of format you do? Because I don't know if we have to pay all kinds of money to do that.
Well, of the, of the four people sitting over here, probably so.
Y'all couldn't agree on how y'all wanted to do it, because each, and I'm sure the Clerk's Association probably has one they, they like that hopes theirs. Greg, I don't know where your offices came from, but, I mean, it looked good.
We built it.
I think that's why we're gonna sit down now, instead of everybody going their own way, is have this meeting, get everybody in the same room at the same time.
You're gonna try to get a bunch of politicians to agree on something.
Sure, sure.
That's just where we try.
All right. Good luck. Let's try.
Four of us over here say we can agree.
We'll see.
We're gonna, we're gonna get out the makers, Mark.
Hey, hey, you know what?
Put 20 in there somewhere, and...
Hey, it doesn't matter if they agree. Only two of us have to agree, and that's the way it's gonna be done.
Power.
It's Friday, in-voting, knowing everything.
I say tell Kristen, God damn.
All right, the next thing is Juvenal.
She's not here today.
I did, I did change the budget a little bit on part-time and Juvenal, and that was due to the nurse. I thought, because of the way they used it, um, this year in part-time, that we could get by without changing Kristen's recommendation, even without adding a nurse. After looking back at the year before last, I think we can increase it about 16,000, and a nurse is a big part of that, which is about 1,000. So I want to move it to 156. They used... 1, 125 this year, but 140 last year. And he laid 13, and explained it to me, he was down a little bit, and he does expect it to be up, because he will have, he has more children in the center the last three months of this year.
What's gonna be up?
The part, needing the part-time. So with the adding the nurse, I wanna move that up to 16,000.
And he's gonna be down 40,000 in salaries?
They went from 185, and so it's gonna go to 156. So overall, part-time has gone down. Even adding the nurse. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. If you guys have any questions about that.
I'm good.
I'm good with that part, but do we need to advertise that position? Because I think
Chris brought up that concern before, and we never did really talk about that.
Well, but I think he had to have a nurse as of January 1, so I think we were kind of under a, a time crunch, um, and then trying to find somebody who could work the hours that they require. I had talked to Cap Region, because I, I think Michael had talked to Cap Region, too, because they're just, you can spit and hit Cap Region, and they couldn't get, they couldn't get that where they could guarantee they'd have a nurse down there from, what is it, Florida?
I'm not saying it's gonna change anything, though, but to comply with the EOE, we gotta watch what we do, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe not on this one.
But I think, I think we just, you know, as of January 1, we had to have a nurse there just to, to meet...
You can know who you're gonna hire, and you still gotta advertise it, spend money on it, and spend two weeks waiting, so...
Yeah, I mean, we, we went through the whole last year without having a nurse there 20 hours a week, so another month or whatever wasn't gonna be critical, um, so, anyway, but...
And I think I'll just make a call to all the departments, all the elected officials, to make sure they know they should have...
Just to cover our backsides. Even if, I mean, you know who you're gonna hire, if that happens, but we're gonna watch it, because we're gonna be the ones that get sued.
That's not equal opportunity if you already know who you're gonna hire. I mean...
Yeah, but if you advertise it.
Keep it open mind.
Yeah.
All right, now we'll go on to the last request that was made by the Assessor, as far as him wanting a commercial appraiser. I know I did send you guys a... Basically, the Assessor's budget for 2013 and 2012, we budgeted for 11 physicians, and in 2014, we did add a new physician. We went to 12 physicians, and at a salary of around 40,000. And at that time, we were, we were thinking it was for a commercial spot, okay? As the year went on, in 2014 in May, we received some pay forms, increases for his current employees, and then also throughout the year, we ended up with another residential appraiser. So basically, he took some of that money that we had set aside for that commercial spot, gave it out, and, and just to let, you know, nobody else in the county received raises that year, because we had, we're paying for the insurance and everything else. And he ended up with six residential appraisers. Now, he did take one of the current staff and call them slash commercial, you know, so, so that's how that happened, so I just wanted to let you know that. But we did add a physician in 2014. And the way I understood his conversation the other day was, he couldn't find a commercial appraiser for that kind of money, so I would assume that he should have probably came back to you guys and said, "I can't find one for that. Can you help me with some money?" So I just need to know if you want to put another physician in the Assessor's budget, making it, or he's asking for actually two, making it actually 14.
So I'm confused, Debbie. I don't see where we added a position.
Okay.
And so, looking at your spreadsheet, and the amount of people there, I see 12.
It does have one filled in.
Well, yeah, but there's no money in there for that. It shows a new clerk position with no money in the salary line.
That's the current one? That's 2015. That's an open position he had. Are we...
No, I'm looking at 14, when Jackie was still here.
This is, what I did was take the beginning one, for the first of the year. For the first of the year, 2000, what'd you say, 13?
Well, yeah, I guess.
I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11, 13. And when we start at 14, counting him.
I got 12 there. I'm not counting that one. Right, I'm not counting that one. There's 13 positions there.
4, 20? I got 12. Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. 12, not counting this one. I mean, even though you're showing it new, there's no money in there. So then I come down here, and I look at this, and I assume this is for 15, or this was 14, or whatever.
Yeah, because that's the right amount of money.
There's 12 there, too.
The budget was 410, so let's see who we're missing. 1, 2, go back up.
Tom, Chris, Joe, Adam, Marion.
Joe, Joe?
Joe Evers.
Uh-huh.
Adam Brown, Marion Hughes, then a new one, Ryan, Ryan Griffin, Philip Mercer, Jackie Wood, Al Bean, Don Mamer, Brad Oliver.
Is that your 2012, 2013 positions? Because y'all had 11 back then.
Yeah, so, is that the last one?
Mm-hmm.
That's on the sheet. You're on sheet one, what's sheet two? Because I want 10 on sheet two, so.
I, I think we took that clerk out. I don't know, this is where the, this matched the budget for 2013, I don't know what sheet that is.
That was sheet two, I guess. I mean, I see a new physician, I mean, I see two new physicians there, but only one has money, so.
I'm getting confused because this is 14.
Mm-hmm.
It's 14 and there's 12 there, but when I went back to 13.
Okay, maybe you didn't, maybe you didn't send us that one then.
It was in this email, I'm gonna say it was attached.
What's in there?
The, all the 12, 13 and 14 years that we started the budget.
In this email?
Yeah.
Well, that's, I only got one file.
No, okay, open that file and go down.
Well, that's, this is a file that I got opened.
Oh. Okay, well. These are, I could scan them for you.
No, that's fine. So we added a position, but what, so, okay, so we added a position, but did we add any money for that position?
Yes, 4,000.
Judy left in 13, right?
She was on the list, 13 at the beginning, yeah.
And he had, her salary, he could have hired a general commercial appraiser with. Instead, he hired another general appraiser. And then took the money that was left over and spread it out among the other ones.
Yes.
Which could have still had to get it, I mean, I don't disagree, he needs a general appraiser, a certified appraiser. But he had the money in there, if we put another person in his budget, he's gonna be dipping into reserves. He's gonna be, he's gonna have a structural deficit or operational deficit and we're gonna be dealing with that. He's got a healthy reserve right now, but you don't know, if the state starts taking away what they're gonna pay, that's gonna dip into that real fast. So, I'm not inclined to add it.
And that is true, right now, his, uh, carry for his contingency balance with the current positions that we have in there. So if he did, it would eat away at the reserves, like Jeff was saying. Have we done that before? Yes, another fund we have, but in the assessment fund, it's funded by the tax base, it's funded by state tax commission on the amount of levy they're gonna charge for parcel. So I don't see that ever going up very high to accommodate the, you know, adding FTS. When you add FTS and adds, it's an ongoing expense. Now, he did mention that he had a contractor that he didn't use and for 4,000.
It's about 4,000, yeah.
I would suggest he keeps doing that until it becomes unreasonable for us not to hire.
That's what Kristen and I had talked about too, is maybe just seeing how that goes and if it gets where it's, you know, too, too expensive, then we need to do something else.
Right. When it gets to be more expensive than hiring one and paying for benefits, then that's what we have to do. I'm sure he would argue different, but. I mean, or you could take the open position that he's not filled yet, which is a residential appraiser, just so happens to be open, you could add a little more money to that.
Yeah.
Ask him, ask him to call that the residential, or the commercial. But again, once the money's in his budget, he has the ability to do whatever he wants with it, so.
Yeah, I'm not gonna add a position, I mean, I, I'd be willing to maybe give him a little more money in that current open position to hire a general commercial appraiser, but.
I'd contract it out this year again. If we get to where it's gonna go over what would, would cost us to hire another person, we can deal with it then. Because he had the money in there to do that before to hire one. Good with that? What else you need?
So did we decide?
I.
Or did you decide?
No, I, well, I kinda go with Jeff, I think that's, uh, and again, talking to Kristen, because, you know, I'm new. It's, but I, you look at what, the benefits and everything else, if we, it gets very expensive to add a new employee.
We just got done going through a lot of work with the service department, not to pick on you Greg, but actually, I think it's a compliment to get things looking in the future to be very bright. And not be in a, you know, operational deficit, so.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So.
So, no, no increase to funds and no new positions. Right.
All right.
I agree also.
Thanks, Albie.
In fact, if you'd like to stall the vote, we're over here.
You're the presiding commissioner, you can stop that kind of stuff. Where's our tail twister? Lion Tamer.
I do, I do have ham and bean tickets too for the.
Oh, that's why, that's why I looked my article the other day.
You're not gonna buy from him.
Huh?
You're not gonna buy from him, are you?
He gives me a lot of work.
So which ham and bean dinner is this?
Jeff said he hosts lion, it's not till February, February 4th.
Honey Creek Lions has theirs on January 20 15th.
Yeah, I know, I bought tickets yesterday, I, I got that. I got those, I gave them to Warren to give away on the radio.
Okay, so short of the prosecutor and the MOU that he's setting on, um, we're ready.
Did he understand what we were doing with that?
Yes.
Okay, because I, the email that you had kinda sent, I wanted to make sure we explained that, didn't we? Okay, good.
And he, I don't know why he would rather us pay for the FT and I tried to, you know, say we're trying to get out of business with special treatment for special people, a lot of special funds. So if he hasn't contacted you and again, if he doesn't have it signed by nine o'clock on Monday, then we'll just take it out of budget.
Oh, we don't have to approve the budget Monday, we got till the 31st.
We're not, we're not quite, we're not quite done yet, so.
Basically, again, the salary is what's out there is 2% merit, uh, 2% COLA, excuse me, in each department's budget. The merit money is setting aside as a salary reserve in each fund. And I have received several departments, um, accommodate for what to do with their merit. We can do it after the budget, what I envision is getting that ready for you, I actually have it on the agenda for the 20th. Um, for you to review those, make sure you're okay with the way they decided to give out the merit. And then we'll transfer the money from that one reserve account back to the department's account before January's payroll. And again, if we don't get those by the 15th, uh, for me to get them ready for you on the 20th, then that will be prorated and start in February. You guys have any questions about how we're doing that this year and so?
I have just a quick question, we're supposed to, you want to recommend a percentage for each employee?
Whatever you wanna do, as long as it stays within that dollar.
Do, do you wanna show them our spreadsheet, if that's what you like?
Well, I wanted to kinda let you guys know if you wanna talk about it before that meeting on the 20th, or if you wanna see all the copies of the evaluations or any of that.
I'm not gonna micromanage it that much, I just would like to see there's some kind of structure to it, not just, well, I'm just gonna do this amount all the way across the board. But, you know, we're gonna get something like that.
Debbie, would you show him our spreadsheet? Because Chris saw it already.
Yeah, I, I told Greg.
Well, yours is a lot different, you got how many.
Yeah, you've got a lot of.
Employees, where you got, I also have four or six.
It gives everything that you, you were asking for on there, I think.
And, you know, there's one year that, and there was, you know, somebody that pushed for it, they wanted a certain structure to it, I didn't necessarily agree with that.
Well, what I told Greg is, I mean, I, I liked the spreadsheet that he had, I mean, I think it might need a little tweaking, but maybe you just had some column wrong or something. But I'd like to see at least maybe an evaluation form that shows it, or two, that shows that you did it.
We, we, we'll give you the printout of a couple with the names redacted, we do ours online and it remind you, we, we've paid for that for several years. And it reminds each supervisor when they're due up on their employees and they do their evals.
That's fine, I just wanna see some kind of a plan and, and then maybe the pay forms with it or something and if it's good, we'll just, we'll approve them right then and there and get it done in the payroll.
Okay, and as soon as I get in my mind, let you guys see, because it's an overwhelming stack, if you get it all at one time.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And again, on Monday, all you're gonna do is accrue the court order, I did send a court order to you. Of our fund, our balances.
We might.
We might, yes.
And a letter to all the department heads and that about.
Take the day off on Monday.
Okay, do we?
I'll be here either way.
Do we have anything else to come before the commission?
Well, I do have.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
And I'm gonna take the email that you did receive from the treasurer's office, that would be part of the merit decision, not anything that is discussed today.
I got his email and I was, couldn't figure out what he was recommending, so.
Well, there's definitely more to what's merit.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was, because of the, how late it is in the game.
Yeah.
That we are past that point, so we can talk about it at merit time tomorrow.
Okay.
And, uh, that's it for budget 20, and again, uh, have all that stuff ready for you. And you guys can see out here, if you wanna scroll through those Excel spreadsheets, they're out there under 2015 and they're out there as a general fund and then other funds. So both of those together is the total budget that's gonna be approved. And you can see from what the audit recommended to where we've approved by the commission and the reason for any change. And again, we'll have to have that ready for the public on Monday to hand out if they wanted. Fortunately, not too many people come to the public hearing, but there are 50.
Jeff will want a copy.
Jeff, yes. All right, so that's it for the budget.
Okay.
All right, well, I did tell you guys, just let the sheriff see, he probably knows, and I did not see an email from Larry, so I thought I'd better tell you. Our Centertown shed, um, public work actually got broken into, um, and these are the items that were taken, that they could figure out. The total is way under what we have, um, insurance deductible for, but I just wanted to let you know.
They, they also don't know whether it was broken into, left open, or who has possible keys to it. So key control, it's back to the same issues that we've got across countywide that we've dealt with on security issues, is people have got to deal with key control very closely.
What's our deductible?
So, it was, when you say broken in and you're talking key, I mean, was, was, was the door kicked, kicked in or?
To be honest, off the top of my head, I don't know for sure, but there was some discussion on whether or not that it was left unlocked.
Okay.
And that was over the hollies, so.
And, and if, and, and the problem, the problem with a physical key is if somebody goes out and duplicates it, even though when they leave, they turn in the key, you still got keys out there. And you don't know.
And I'm not sure where we are with that. Committee group, are we still waiting for that gentleman to get back? I'm not sure if he's made all the visits, um, that was hired to help us.
Well, and, and on some of those places, you wouldn't have it electronic, but you can use the combination locks where you can change those combinations every time you switch employees that have access.
I mean, that, that type of equipment shouldn't have been out there, in my opinion, anyway. None of that small stuff should have been there. The only thing that I could really see is the power washer, I mean, I realize they're trying to wash their stuff down, but the only thing really left there is salt and a piece of equipment, which is like a backhoe. And somebody could run that down to a car wash or leave it outside and let it rain on it or something, I don't know, but.
I'm not sure, that's why I thought it was just, um, you guys come there, get in their motor grader and can go from there instead of having to go all the way out to the shop, if they're doing that part of the county. But how he runs it, I'm not sure.
Right, well, I mean, the motor grader's not gonna be inside the salt shed anyway, I assume all that stuff was inside, so. Yeah, I mean, somebody's gotta physically drive to that shed to grab a weed eater or chainsaw or whatever. Well, I'm sure they're going out to Monticello to grab a truck to go do that, so they grab the tools and take them with them and they bring them back at the end of the day.
So you guys can talk to Larry and learn about how they run that too. Um, the only other thing I have is the committees, and I don't know if you guys have decided on.
We haven't.
I haven't looked.
We haven't, we haven't really talked about it, I figure we'll get.
Put that on the agenda.
Budget down and we'll.
We got, we still got closed session, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. I got limited time.
Let's get that on.
Anything else?
Let's get those committees on next week, maybe, we have two meetings next week.
I think just one on Monday. We can schedule another one, I don't care.
Yeah.
No, let's put it on the 20th, maybe.
Yeah, we'll do that, okay, move, we adjourn?
Uh, we're not adjourned.
Oh, we're going, we're going into closed session.
You know, hurry and get out of here.
No, 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 we're going into closed session.
Told you the first day we'd take it easy on you, you're fair game now, buddy.
Aye, move that we go into closed session pursuant to 610.021 sub 3 for personnelist issues.
Second.
All favor.
Aye. You're in charge, man.
I know, wait, wait. Well, I figure you moved, he seconded it.